Rockport, also?
Mark Bratner, Camden Select Board.
Matt Heath, firefighter in Camden.
Chris Whitlock, fire chief for the city of Rockland.
Jonathan Ward, firefighter in Camden.
Clint Beveridge, firefighter in Camden.
Jason Peaslee, Rockport Fire Chief.
Chris Farley, Camden Fire Chief.
Taylor Benzie, Camden Select Board.
Bill Post, soon to be Rockport Town Manager.
And Bob Falchiani, Camden Select Board. Cool, let's go with, again, the objective here is, I believe, is to help us to, especially those of us who aren't expert in this field, to better understand the metrics of EMS service and, you know, the good, the bad, and the ugly, so that we can hopefully be armed and dangerous to make future, if ever, future decisions regarding EMS. So with that, Audrey, am I turn it off to you to start and talk about some of the areas we would like to talk about today?
Certainly, so, we've been talking for a little while now about looking at an alternative service delivery model for EMS in Camden and hopefully the other towns that we're currently part of the agreement with. But one of the questions I feel like we really haven't answered is why we're even looking at an alternative in the first place. And I think it's really important to explain to everyone why we've come to the point where we think that it's worthwhile to consider some sort of an alternative. And there's a number of reasons, and we've tried to go through and kind of lay out what they are and some examples of all of them. So Chris Farley and Jason Peaslee have done a lot of work to look into Knox County Communication Center data from the dispatch center to give an idea of some of the, you know, quantitative measures of performance in terms of our current EMS system. And they've also gone through and outlined some of the more qualitative topics that are worth discussing today. So I'm going to hand it over to both of them because they've done a lot of work to gather all of that data.
So I think just a little historical context in that, I think in 2013 when Camden First Aid stopped operating and the town went to look, put out an RFP and looked at other ways to provide EMS, we weren't consulted. The local fire chiefs weren't consulted in terms of how we move forward with that, and it was just, let's put in another RFP to private ambulance services. I think that, I think that was a missed opportunity, that we could have been looking at it back then. I think when we were chatting last week, that's one of the things that Mark talked about, is we have professional public safety people, let's engage them in that conversation. So in terms of our current provider, Northeast Mobile Health, I think the question was posed, if they're meeting the agreement, why are we looking at some other alternatives? And so I think that's kind of what we have to look at. And I think, from the beginning, part of our concern is that there has not been a dialogue, productive, constructive dialogue between Northeast and those of us who are providing public safety. And that, you know, one of the things we talked about is, okay, why isn't that happening? And so there's some skepticism around the transparency that Northeast is providing in terms of the data that they're offering, in terms of how they're meeting the agreement. As well as staffing issues, there are a number of staffing issues that we hear about regularly. Are they providing enough ambulances to meet the contract? I think Chief Whitlock's experienced recently in talking with the leadership at Northeast and trying to say, you know, let's get together, let's have conversations. When you're short staffed, the city will add some staff to help make sure that we're covering the area. And that lasted maybe a day, maybe two days.
Yeah.
So, you know, we're, it's a struggle in terms of, are we meeting the needs of the community, I think. It's easy enough for me to have a conversation with the police chief, where I go across the hall and we have a conversation if something happens. In terms of being able to converse with Northeast when things aren't necessarily going right, we haven't met with Joe Conley in well over a year, I believe, the Director of Operations, the person who oversees the Rockport base. So when there are concerns, when there are issues that happen on calls, there is no dialogue. There's no way to make things change, there's no way to improve things. We do that regularly. We had a, we went to a fire in Hope in June, we had a post-incident evaluation within a week afterwards. We had a building fire here in the first part of July. We invited everybody into this room, had a post-incident evaluation, what went well, what can we improve on, and then what are the goals to make those improvements? That conversation does not happen with Northeast. So how do we move forward, how do we make it better? I think that's been part of our struggle. There's some, what I would call, leadership issues with Rockport. There hasn't been a manager here since November of 2018, so nobody overseeing the daily operations. To my knowledge, there are no supervisors. So the Rockport base, which is covering the four towns, is being overseen from, I presume, Scarborough, which provides some challenges, I would think. There is a large turnover of staff. Chief Whitlock has been successful in hiring a couple of the good folks away from Northeast, which is good for the city. It hurts us because it takes the, some of the better people that Northeast has working for them. And there's also, there are times when Northeast sends up ambulances from either the Brunswick base or the Scarborough base. And my observation is those folks are typically providing a much higher and better level of service to the patient than we're getting here from staff at the Rockport base. So there are a number of issues we could talk about in terms of staffing issues we've seen, there's service providing. There was, we had a building fire in August of 2015 in Lincolnville where two people died. Northeast sent one ambulance, and it was, it was, I literally had to go over to the ambulance, there were two patients on the front lawn. I literally had to go over to the ambulance and tell them to get out of the ambulance because they had patients on the lawn who needed to be cared for. It took us a while, and I think Chief Whitlock ended up coming to that call, and really wasn't until the Rockland ambulance arrived that those patients started to get any type of care.
I remember hearing about that. That was when I first got on the Budget Committee and was just involved in town politics. I had several firefighters from Camden and other EMS people approach me, sort of thinking, maybe somehow Allison, being on the Budget Committee, can bring up some of these things. And there was a lot of, a lot of concern, it was really alarming.
We have, we have a contract with Northeast right now. That contract has certain elements of service required in it. What I'm hearing is you feel that those contract elements are not being adhered to. Do we have the data to support that besides individual incidences?
I think that, I think that Northeast has been telling us that they've been meeting the response time requirements 100% of the time. So in my review of the data from, this is July, excuse, yeah, July 1st, 2018 to December 31st, in using the data, I have been, I've used the data from the KRCC and their own data, and using Northeast data, I have that 15% of the time, they have not met the response time requirements. And they have, the agreement is a little interesting because the agreement that we currently have, the RCC dispatches them, they acknowledge the call, and then they arrive on scene. The national standard is the time clock starts when the RCC dispatches them, to when they arrive on time. Our agreement with Northeast says that clock starts when they acknowledge the call.
Right.
To when they arrive on scene. So using that data, 15% of the time, they're over the nine-minute mark.
Using the data from the, they acknowledge the call?
Correct.
And not the RCC?
Correct. If you use the data as when they're dispatched to when they arrive on scene, 29% of the time, they're over the nine-minute mark.
Can you go over the basics of what is in the contract and why, and even, even just the difference in the qualifications of staffing? I hear paramedics and EMTs, and it, I don't know that I have a good understanding of exactly what that means in terms of the level of service that can be provided.
I think it's my understanding that the agreement calls for two medic ambulances to be staffed for the four towns. There are three different license levels for EMS, an EMT basic, an intermediate, and a paramedic.
Yeah, it's a, now, it's a, it's a basic and advanced and a paramedic.
And so in terms of-
Or EMS.
All, yeah, all three are EMS.
Those who are EMTs.
Yes, the typical kind of mindset of the layperson is that, you know, a person shows up on scene and they're a paramedic, and that's, you know, so there are three different levels. Each level allows that provider, you know, more ability, more training, more skills, so.
Can you even delve into that more? That's what I really don't understand. I throw around those terms like EMT and paramedic as if they, I don't-
They're interchangeable.
Maybe, yeah.
Yeah, really, the license level is really dictated by the training that that person receives to get the license level. So in Rockland, for instance, our ambulances are licensed to the advanced level, so that means that every ambulance has at least an advanced EMT on it. But we're permitted to the paramedic level, so that means that we can have paramedics, we can have all the drugs in the ambulance. I'm going to assume Northeast is probably the same way, but I don't know that.
So paramedic is the highest.
That's my question.
Typically around at least 1,200, 1,500 hours of training. Can I suppose to several hundred for an advance as opposed to someone like myself as a basic, around 180 hours?
That's where you can administer drugs?
As a paramedic, you can, you can administer more drugs than in advanced, so.
Yeah, I think the, a good, I was going to touch on this, but I think the, a good way to, to look at it is like what, what service can be, can be provided by the different levels? And so for, for instance, if somebody is-
Yeah, I need sort of concrete examples.
Is having, if somebody's having a chest pain, having a stroke, you know, cardiac event, the more life-threatening things, I think perhaps maybe if you get, in a nutshell, could talk about like, a paramedic is the only person licensed to give a certain level of, you know, a certain level of drugs, the only, you know, the only person licensed to be able to do cardioverting, things that you would need in certain instances when you're having a life-threatening emergency. And if you don't have a paramedic there, you can't, you're not licensed by the state to be able to provide a number of services. Is that accurate?
Are there instances where somebody, where, you know, Northeast or, I mean, I'll just say, Northeast would arrive at a situation in one of the four towns, and they've said, we don't have somebody that can provide the level of care that this particular situation needs?
Yeah.
Whereas if they had had some extra level on the ambulance, somebody would have been able to be cared for in a more effective way. Has that happened?
So July, July 1st, 2018, they had, Northeast had a call at 105 Mechanic Street, which is Winward Gardens. And the first ambulance arrived on scene, and typically when they're, when, when ambulance is dispatched, they, the RCC provides them with a level of service that they should be providing based on a dispatch code. So if it requires a medic, they know that going out the door, is that fair to say?
Yeah, yeah, so just, yeah, dispatch asks a bunch of questions, and that gives them a basis to let us know what it sounds like the call is going to need to be staffed at. So essentially, a, what they call a Charlie response or a Delta response, typically a paramedic is, is going to be needed on those calls.
So if it's just somebody sprained their ankle, you make sure that you don't send, you know, you reserve the really highly trained people for something else that might happen? Okay.
So July 1st, 2018, they had a call at Winward Gardens, and the first ambulance arrived in seven minutes, 39 seconds. Shortly thereafter, they requested a medic, which was another 22, almost 23 minutes before.
Winward Gardens, I would, I guess I would have thought that Winward Gardens would have some people on staff, but.
That's, that's always been the fight we've had in the contract, is to have enough paramedic-level people. A basic EMT is basically, can deal with trauma. I think if, if I remember, it can only give oxygen and glucose, if I remember.
That's what basic EMT can do.
That's what basic EMT, yeah. And so that means if they get there-
Really?
Yeah. And there's an advanced EMT which can do a few more things, I think put in an IV, do a few things. But all the drugs needed for, to deal with stroke situation, heart situation, things that can really save somebody's life in that golden hour-
Right.
Only a paramedic can give.
Right.
And that's always been the challenge, is getting the staffing. If I can give a little background, maybe it'll help.
Can I ask one more quick question about how we know, so you're talking about response time. Is there a different category that's whether or not they had the appropriate level of staffing for the incident?
Yeah, so we've got two criteria in the contract that we use for performance standards. So one is response time, and then the other is response level. So how we have it in the contract is for any advanced life support calls, so that's the ones that the chiefs have been talking about, we require that they respond with a paramedic staff vehicle for 95% of these calls. And then for every percentage below 90%, or 95% that they drop, they are expected to pay a penalty.
What kind of data do we have on, on response level?
That's, and that's the tricky one, really, we have to rely on Northeast numbers for that. Unless it kind of shows up in the dispatch report, we don't have really-
Because there's no one there at the, at the scene saying, okay, do we have a paramedic here? Check.
Well, I guess, let's talk a little bit, maybe, if I can just, first of all, I guess you're, we have a contract with Northeast. Have they been notified of these aberrations in contract performance officially?
You guys have had, attempted numerous times, like you were saying earlier, to communicate-
I'm asking, I'm asking, this is, this is an operational contract with the town of Camden and four, three other towns. Have they been officially noticed of any contractual failures?
No.
I think that would be somewhat of our job also, as a, as a group, to say, does, they're bringing it to our attention, we're kind of saying, okay, we have the contract for them, does this come to, you know?
Absolutely.
And I think that, that's certainly challenging because it's very, as I've said, it's very difficult to get them to sit at the table, and it's very, and that's even more difficult to have a constructive dialogue-
Right, right.
Without it.
Right. I get, I get, I get that, but I think the first step in-
And I think there's a couple of things going on. One, there's not meeting our current contract and those issues. Two is, is our contract delivering a sufficient level of service?
Right.
And I think there's a lot of arguments to be made that it is not. And three is, even if we amended our current contract, could it deliver the level of service that our community expects of us? So I think those are the three things that we're trying to give you examples of right now as to what the issues are in those three categories. So I think it's good-
Can we even effectively monitor it? Do we have, what kind of staffing on our part would be required to effectively audit, so to speak?
Any service.
Whether or not the contract is being, I mean, it sounds like we basically have to have our fire department as detectives saying, okay, did you, did anybody see a paramedic there when, I mean?
And just to give you a little idea of how we evolved to a performance-based contract, really this came out of an impasse between Camden, Rockport, Hope, and Lincolnville as to level of service. So Camden very much wanted to remain at a higher level of service, and I think Rockport agreed as well at the time we were negotiating the renewal of the contract for 2018. But Northeast really encouraged the communities to reduce the amount of paramedic staff vehicles that were available. And Hope and Lincolnville agreed with what Northeast was proposing, and the, and Camden and Rockport didn't. So there was sort of an impasse, and the best way we could all see our way out of this impasse was through a performance-based contract. But we found a lot of problems with that model in, you know, available data from Knox County Regional Communication Center. You know, what kind of information is that data going to give you that you're able to use to independently verify the numbers that Northeast is giving us?
So to your point, we, if, is it possible, or what would we recommend for contractual changes between us and Northeast to accomplish a better level of monitoring so we can assure we're getting the highest level of service? What can change?
I think, I think they're kind of saying it might not be-
Well, I heard, I'd already heard Audrey just say, she says some things that may be able to be changed and some that may not. And I'm trying to understand what may be able to be changed and what not, because we have a contract for the better part of one year left with Northeast Services. So we have services required now from that company. They're not going away tomorrow. So I want to know, if you're telling me that we have, what I'm hearing is we have issues with Northeast, I believe they should be, they should be addressed right now and hard. That's, that's, that's where I'm going. And then, next question's going to be about, I'm going to ask questions to forewarn you, is let's talk about what the level of service should be in the, in the better world. Let's talk about that while we're here too, but let's do one at a time. I think it's smarter to talk about, we've got some issues here, we see, I'm hearing, and I'm talking globally here, so, you know, because I'm not an expert here, but these two guys and you guys are. But we have issues with the current contract, what can we, should we change? Now, if they don't give us attention, that's another issue. That's, that's a contractual issue that we have to deal with as an entity, as the owner, as it were, four towns, by the way, which makes it a little bit more complicated at times.
But don't we have an individual contract with-
They are.
That would be another question to try and talk about.
They are individual contracts.
So when we decide that there's been a violation or breach-
Correct.
We deal with that collectively, or we deal with our, is all that data-
Excellent question.
Globally?
Excellent question.
No, but I- I believe the contract deals with it as all four, it all combines.
I believe that, no, I believe the contract is signed with the town of Camden for Camden, and its performance for Camden, therefore, in my opinion, legally, can be separate issue.
Previous one was all four, and it was a combination of all four towns' stats. Did it change in the new contract?
So the, the 2018 agreement, that's sort of the basis of all this, it was individual for each town, so they, you know, each town, you have to meet that performance standard for each individual town. They, they show the reporting combined, but they'll, they break it down for each town as well.
But I thought the penalties were involved, that it was, it was a combination of all four towns.
Well, what, what it-
Yeah, I- Do you think is average?
Yeah, let's check that, because it's important.
Let me, yeah, let me just- Yeah, my, I guess my, my perspective on the contractual obligations and whether they're being met or not right now, also compared at the same time with, I guess I have trouble with, you know, I think we can pin down, there really are very few things in our contract now that are quantifiable measurements that we use to look at whether or not Northeast is providing service, and that is primarily response time. But I don't think that that discounts the importance of, you know, providing a service and an assumed level of service at a professional level that you're supposed to be providing that's not necessarily a contract point. For example, communication with the fire chiefs, just being prepared when, at the level that you're expected to be at. I mean, I think there are, those examples are important to me personally, at least, because I feel like, you're never going to be able to quantify and have data that says working with, working with the folks from this company that we deal with on a daily basis is challenging for these reasons. So to me, that's an, it just is an important discussion.
Oh, I agree.
But this, I don't think it would ever be quantifiable.
True.
The, I just want to go back to the call levels that Allison, I think, was trying to get at with the service levels with paramedic and advanced. I think the, I think that's a bit of a misnomer, the way that, the way that we look at it and the way that we measure it. I worked in, you guys all know, but I worked in dispatch here in Knox for two years before I went to work for the city that I work for now. And was dispatching there while Northeast was here and had a really interesting bird's eye view of how that works. So if, you know, say a call, and I'll get to kind of why I think it's a misnomer. A call, a 911 call comes in, it's answered at Knox, the dispatcher's asked a set of information, they input it in their computer, and the computer spits out a dispatch code. It will be A, B, C, D, E, E being the most life-threatening, A being seemingly the least life-threatening. The problem with that is, say, Mima on Mechanic Street, medical alarm pendant goes off, and she says, I fell and I need some help, I fell down and can't get up. So they dispatch it. That's usually dispatch as a fall call, which would be a non-life-threatening call. So let's put it as an Alpha or a Bravo level call, which means that ambulance will be dispatched and it by contract is not required to have a paramedic on it. The problem is, by not having paramedic trucks staffed 24 hours and being consistently paramedic trucks, when that ambulance shows up to find the person who was on the floor, because their medical alarm pendant went off, and they don't have a paramedic, but they find out the reason she fell was because she was having chest pain and is having a much more significant medical event, which would require or really need a paramedic. So now, that crew is behind the eight ball in terms of time, 10, 15 minutes may have gone by, we need a paramedic. The chief gave a good example of, of how that works. So I think the, we can measure or have a requirement that 95% of those life-threatening calls, paramedic be at, but it's really, I just in my mind, not a foolproof way of making sure that the service is there. And I think that's part of the, what you're getting to, Bob, the discussion for-
Depends on self-diagnosis of the person, for the person falling.
It's just, it's a, it's a reality, I think, of the job, the way to, you know, and, and an argument for, you should have a paramedic truck staffed.
Right.
Period.
Right, right.
And that should be the service level. That's not what we ask of Northeast now. You know, I think that we had brought that up initially, or at least hinted at the idea that that might be something that we want to look at, and I think at our meeting in February, which from Northeast have indicated like, you know, we can, we can do that for you, we can staff paramedic trucks at your fire stations in Rockport and Camden. My concern then is, you know, if we're hearing, we're hearing at the same time that they're having staffing issues, so if, you know, I just don't know that the, the problem could be solved. And I feel like, hold on, but I feel like we're-
Sorry, Kelly.
As a, as a service center, I really feel like that we have an obligation to make sure that we're providing a high consistent level of service. And that's not something that is in our contract that we deal with Northeast now, I think that's more of a, a conversation for what we feel like, what the acceptable level of service that we're providing the community, as an Audrey touched on it, like the reason the performance-based contract came in last year for the first time was because we couldn't agree with our other town partners on what that minimum level of service should be. And, you know, we may find that moving forward, all four of us may not agree on what that minimum level of service is, and that's okay.
Sure, sure.
But I think for us, like, I really feel like we need to take a serious look at what our minimum acceptable level of service is.
And that's more than just having a paramedic on an ambulance, because as I said, there's, there's no leadership here. We had a response July 3rd up in the state park, and there was a paramedic on that call. However, there was nobody managing that call. I got a text from Chief Whitlock that said they're out there on the mountain, and I was going out to my truck and talked with Matt, and they were up on the mountain. They had no idea where the patient was, they had no idea where they were.
Wow.
I was the first person to arrive to the patient, and they were already on the mountain before I ever left my dooryard. So it's more than just have an ambulance, a medic on the ambulance. It's, it's having, providing leadership and providing the guidance to, to deliver the service to the community.
So I bring us back to, we have 11 months left in- Of course. 11 months left in the contract. What I'm hearing is we're telling the residents of Camden over this live stream that we have a problem with the current level of service of our current contract. And I want to know, what are we going to do, what are we going to speak with Northeast about to improve that performance? Because we, this is not just about, and by the way, that includes, you know, all the things you, everybody's mentioned here. But that's, I'm hearing, we have, one, a contract is not adequate, correct? Two, we have a performance question mark on the entity, fine, but we've got to, we've got to bring that to the table with Northeast to give them a chance to respond.
We do have the EMS committee for the four towns.
Yes.
And that is the committee that is supposed to bring up these issues with Northeast. We've not had a meeting in quite a while, it's been hard to get together, but that's the official thing. But I'm not sure about the new contract, do we need to pull all four towns together? Do we know what the stats are for the other four towns?
We've only, we've only looked at our response times, or, yeah, response times and to what extent we can, response levels.
So that, all of the data that Chief Farley is talking about is just Camden?
That's Camden. I think Rockport's pulled their data and looked at it as well.
Is it similar?
It's exactly the same.
I guess this is another problem. There is a narrative out there that there's, they're meeting their contract, there's no problem at all. We have, there's no way anyone can put their hand to their heart and say that besides these two fire chiefs right now, because they finally, it took us over, I think, 11 months to get the data that we needed from Knox County to-
Why is that?
Be able to even independently, I mean, there's other stuff that we won't go into in this meeting with that. But we finally got it, they were finally able to sort of look at this, and I think- But we finally got it, they were finally able to sort of look at this, um, and I think, what is it, we, we said 85% of the time is when they're.
Sounds so messed up.
Meeting their.
Talk about transparency.
Right, in, in the contract in terms of, um, response times, so penalties for not meeting their response times, they need to, their average response time needs to be nine minutes, and if it falls to between nine and 9:30, that's a $2,500 penalty, so.
And we've never penalized them?
Never penalized them, because we haven't had the data to independently verify it. And if you look at their Northeast data, they're meeting it 100% of the time.
That, that brings to the question, is, are there, is the contract detail, even that we signed individually, that it's an average of the four towns, which I think it used to be in the former contract? Or can we do it individually?
So what it, what it says here, um.
Used to be the average of the four towns, which is how they got out of.
No, it's not, it's individual times.
Is it, are there different minimum response times?
It's nine minutes for us in Rockport, and then it's like 18, I don't know, 18 for.
It's 17 for Lincolnville.
We have two weeks ago, then, we can either, you know, organize the EMS committee to talk to them on a general basis, or we can have the town of Camden invite them to a select board meeting and bring it up there.
Well, you can do, I mean, there's a number of ways of doing it. It's a contractual element. If we, if we collectively believe, Camden believes that a contract has not been fulfilled and give the town manager the authority to negotiate with that contract supplier to approve whatever A, B, C, and D is.
Doesn't the contract say, though, that these things are dealt with through the EMS committee?
It does.
Because it's called the Performance Review Committee, or?
Yeah.
And what, and I'd say another complicating factor is Northeast is on a completely different system than all of the, you know, municipal departments in our region. So Butch even said to me, he's like, "The numbers aren't gonna match up, I'm just gonna tell you this right now. Our numbers aren't gonna match up with the, um, with Knox County."
Because.
Why does he think that is?
Because.
Because they use, what is it that she described earlier?
The metric system or something?
So they have their own system. There really isn't a good answer for, there isn't a reasonable answer for it, but the way, from what I understand, there's a, there's a private dispatch called MedCom. They dispatch for Lifelight, they dispatch for Northeast and other private ambulance services. So when the, when a 911 call comes in and Northeast is notified here in Rockport, once, once they get en route, they call their own, they call MedCom, who handles all of their business, "We're en route to this call at 105 Mechanic Street, this is what we get dispatched for." And then they let them know we arrived, at the same time that they're talking to the actual 911 center in Rockland.
Why do they do that? Because they don't, are Knox County dispatch isn't good enough, or what do you, what?
To, to the contract, to the contract, what I'm hearing so far is dissatisfaction with the response time as a topic.
That's very confusing.
Is that correct? What, what questions about response time? Two, there's a, there's a desire to have paramedics on all, I'm not sure what term to use, on all of the calls, is that?
I think it is good, what you were saying before, to separate out the contractual issues we see right now, the act.
Absolutely.
You know, the, the perfect world, like, why our contract probably isn't good to begin with, but.
That's true.
But, but separate it out, like you said.
There's another system, just because they're called paramedics, another situation, just because they're called paramedics doesn't mean they're meeting the standards of paramedic care.
That could be true anywhere.
That's true, but if we have things in-house and our people are trained and managed.
I'm trying to deal with, I'm trying to deal with the contract right now.
Let me just finish. Um, I know of two situations where paramedic care was not up to the levels of paramedic care.
Got it.
And, and maybe a third, and that's, it's not acceptable. We're not getting the paramedic-level care from their paramedics even.
All right, so the second item is paramedic care level. Response time is first, paramedic care level's second in the contract. What else in the contract? Add it.
So those are the two main metrics. So I would say that with response times, even though we've got data where we are supposed to be able to independently verify the result.
Yeah.
We can't because of the fact that they're on a private system that they use as the metric.
Okay.
So it's always going to be a fight between us and them regarding whose data is correct, whose data is not.
But does the contract say, the contract should say which?
It just says independently verifiable.
And originally, the contract.
That's not even, no.
I mean, that would be insane to have a contract that says, "And you can use your own private."
It definitely doesn't say that.
To, to measure response time. Isn't, when, isn't it sort of assumed that that would be with the regional, I mean, why are we even?
Logic is not, the, the other thing is, the, the contract was originally supposed to have, and Butch actually admitted this in the last EMS meeting, that the contract's supposed to be from when, when they're dispatched, not when they're en route, because that's a completely different figure.
Right.
And that adds in time. So it can take them five, 10 minutes to actually get en route, if they're finishing a call, if they're busy doing something else.
Right, right.
And that's supposed to be, the, the, the arrival times are supposed to be based on when they're dispatched, and.
Dispatched by MedCom or dispatched by Knox County?
Knox County. And, but the problem is, the, um, the contracts turned up in terms of en route, and we didn't catch that, and that's our fault, because it should have been when they're dispatched.
Got it.
Dispatched by Knox County, because if you pick up the phone and call 911 right now, that's where it's.
You get Knox County, and that's where it goes into, right?
Why doesn't MedCom come in again?
It's their own.
It's just their, they use that for like, that's how they keep track of, you know, where are all our trucks right now, what's busy, what's available.
It's probably their own software.
So it's an internal, it's internal to Northeast, it's not a private that deals with other private services?
MedCom does, they contract with other private services, but we don't have anything to do with it.
It's kinda like hospital service software.
Trio for us, if we were, if we told the IRS, like, "Well, our system says this," so.
Response time and measurement is one issue with the contract. Second one I've got is, uh, paramedic care level, whatever you wanna call it, I'm not using the right terms, forgive me. And also the, uh, well, this, the response, there's only two really, because the, the public, private, MedCom, or whatever, that's really response time and how it's measured.
It can't quantify the, the care that the paramedic gives.
Right.
Especially without any management from their company.
Right.
But, and, there's too many examples of it not being proper.
Okay.
Can I, yeah, I have a thought on, I, I, I understand what you're trying to do, and I kinda have a, a thought on, on clarifying that, in looking at things in the contract. I think, for me, this is, for me, the, the crux of this conversation, um, is a lot bigger than the contract. And I realize that, like, lining up your ducks and saying, you know, if, if we can look at black and white in the contract to, and compare that to the service that's actually happening on the streets, that's the easiest way to say, something needs to be fixed. Like, you know, "It's supposed to look like this, but it looks like this, this is what we agreed on, how do you, how do you solve that?" You know, it's a black and white, simple, simple method for trying to make improvements. From my perspective, I think that the service level that I would want to see in our community is, is not something that's gonna be attained by the private ambulance system that is being provided to us, that not necessarily is Northeast's fault, but that any private ambulance service that relies on interfacility transfers and other ways to meet their bottom line, where that, as that takes away from their availability for 911 calls, is a problem. So for me, the difference between looking at that system compared to some form of a municipal system, whether it's a partnership, or, you know, or whether a town runs their own municipal system, are two completely different ways to provide the level of service. I personally feel like, you know, six years ago, six and some change, we, we put out the RFP that Chief is talking about, and Northeast came to us with a very attractive $10,000 contract from the town. It's now, in six years, gone from $10,000 to $300,000 that we share. Still, a super low amount of money to be looking at for any EMS system. I guess from my perspective, I think that we, and I think Chief alluded to this earlier, and it's not, you know, not to point fingers at any previous administrations, but I think that, you know, it was truly a missed opportunity six, seven years ago, that we didn't have the conversation about what an alternative system might look like. To me, that's the more important piece. Does a different service delivery system with different providers run under a municipal umbrella, give us better service, period, that, that a private system simply couldn't match for operational reasons? And not, like, not gonna be able to look at a contract and say, you know, "Let's change the contract to solve all those problems." My, my interest is, is there a level of service that we can meet that we're really comfortable with, that we know is gonna be consistent and professional and more controlled by us?
Yeah.
We still have an obligation, though, in the short term, you're bringing up to our attention some serious concerns that people's lives depend on, and so if there's even, you know, if you've got a broken cup on the floor and there's an opportunity, we might decide, yeah, we're still gonna, we're gonna need a different cup, but we still have an obligation in the short term to try to make that, to put that broken cup back together as best as possible, and if it, if it means that the staffing level is better for three incidents that happen in our community over the next coming year, then, I mean, we can't just say, "It is so bad, we don't even wanna bother trying to fix this contract."
I think the trick is like the, I, I totally agree with you. The, and, and I think the problem is, we're in a really difficult position, in that the contract only affords us a very minimal set of criteria to be able to say, "You're not meeting this, you're not meeting this response time, and we need to talk about that."
We have that, so at least.
You have to sit down and negotiate with that person, give them the opportunity to respond. We've just told the public that our current contract we have for EMS is inadequate, that's what I've heard.
It's true.
Not only. Inadequate, but not even being fully met.
Correct.
And I would say that we, we have talked a lot about these concerns with our EMS partner, and the way that we're trying to make up that gap in service delivery is through our fire services being more involved and like.
Right, I mean, how many times does a fire department arrive before the ambulance?
But that's really the best we can do, because you all know they're not willing to nego, like, think of what we went through just to get an extension for a year.
Right.
I, I think that saying we need to negotiate better is theoretically absolutely correct, but in practice, where we're at right now, it's just not going to happen.
And we're, we're not talking about a few months' worth of experience, we're not talking.
No.
We're talking six years' worth of experience.
Right, right.
And we're not seeing any change.
This has never been publicly talked about like this.
That's right.
It's, for years has been like, I've been hearing whisperings, I hear people tell me things, and then, whether it's like a town manager saying, "Let's not talk about this, let's not talk about this."
Some town managers have said, "Let's not talk about this," and, and it's frankly a, a breath of relief that Audra brought this topic up and wants to talk about it.
Sure.
It is a huge relief for me that we're having this conversation.
Sure.
I, I can tell you, I, I have slept many nights without, I've gone through many nights without sleeping, you know, thinking, "What can we do better?" And if, if we had had this conversation six or seven years ago, I would have suggested something about like what we've talked about, because it's not just EMS, it's firefighters as well.
Right.
We, we need people in the fire department.
Right.
And this is a way to help bring more people in and make them be more productive, with cross-training people, fire and EMS providing both the fire service and EMS. And I think this, you know, we can talk about the contract, we've talked about the contract.
Right.
We've tried to sit down with Northeast.
Right.
And move forward. We haven't sat down with them for over a year.
And why is that? Because they won't?
They don't want to. They don't wanna hear the conversation that we wanna have with them.
Isn't that a performance standard also?
Yeah, of course it is, of course it is, of course it is.
But there's no penalty.
Yeah, there is, termination with cause. I mean, come on, people.
That's saying there that they're supposed to coordinate, so we can say.
If they're not functioning in accordance with the contract, there is, termination with cause. So I, you know, we do have recourse, and we need to take that recourse and at least take the step towards, if somebody doesn't respond to me because I've got a contract problem, yeah, I'm gonna take some action against it legally. Uh, but, but I think in fairness, we have identified that this contractor's got issues, the contract, maybe it's the contractor who's got some issues, but we need to be specific about what those are and have them on record. And we are doing that right now, by the way. We're doing that right now in this video. Um, but we have identified it, and I think we have, and if they don't respond, which I was not at all happy with the negotiation, we had to get the one-year extension that we have currently, that was a nightmare for all of us, including the select board. So I, I, I get that backdrop, and I get the frustration too, Chief, I do. I understand that. Um, and we will, and that, but this, remember, when Audra prefaced this whole workshop, it was about, let's identify why we're looking at other options, and we're doing that. But you've also, we've also, from my responsibility personally to the residents of Camden, I, I need to make sure we do everything we possibly can to improve the situation for the next 11 months, or take action. And there is contractual action on every contract. So that's where I'm coming from in terms of, you know, going forward. And then I just don't wanna conclude, and we're getting late, I know, but to conclude, meaning, I, I wanna hear a little bit about what level of services is, should a town be accepting, in terms of, you know, our experience, your experience as EMS experts? Uh, because I'm not an expert there. I've heard the paramedic thing, kinda black and white to me, I get that. Um, I hear the response time, kinda black and white thing, I get that. But I, there must be more beyond that, as we start looking at other alternatives. But we got a parallel action going on here, in my opinion. It's not a stepwise action. I haven't, I haven't heard anybody suggesting we, at this point, we terminate Northeast for cause and go to Plan B. I haven't heard that, and I think that's not.
Until the end of the year.
Mm-hmm. Well, I mean, it could happen, it could happen downstream, but we're not ready for Plan B, whatever that might be, whatever the option.
Ready to deploy.
Right, now, the Plan B could be, I mean, I'm just exaggerating to make a point, whether it's available, not another ambulance service, or a, 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 a model as, as Taylor suggested and others.
Let me, let me talk about the, the nature of the situation, and it's not just Northeast's problem. It's a situation, for those of you, a lot of people know here, I spent 20 years as a, as an EMT with the LA County Sheriff's Department doing search and rescue. I worked with a lot of ambulance services and LA City and LA County Fire in that, in that, in that job. And there's a difference, the, in, the private ambulance companies are for-profit, and the pay is less, the benefits are less, if there are any benefits at all. And most people, especially in LA, were signing onto those jobs as a stepping stone to trying to get into LA County, City, or Fire, so that they could have careers. The, the, the private ambulance service were just a job to get people through.
Sure.
And we have the same situation here, where private ambulance companies have a hard time staffing, because they pay minimally, and it's not a career, it's just a job. And what a lot of people are doing, what happened in, in Rockland, the good people are hoping that they can get hired by a municipal service.
Sure.
So they can have a career.
Sure.
So we have a situation, as long as we're dealing with private companies, we're gonna have people that are in and out, that, they're not long-term people, they don't stay a long time, and so you don't get the quality of service that experience brings. If we have a municipal service that we've, that the chiefs have talked about, then you get to hire, you get the cream of the crop, you have people that are looking for careers that wanna do EMS, and they can do it in a situation where they can support themselves and families, have careers, live in the community.
Yeah.
And provide great service. And it also, as Chris said, what it also does is, if we have cross-training where we have some additional people in the stations, so we have fire people trained as, as paramedics, paramedics trained as fire people, we have, we provide a much better quality of service for the town of Camden. for the town of Camden.
So let's, let's, we, I think we can understand we've got an issue with Northeast's contract that we need to attack, and we need to attack it officially as a signatory to a contract. Okay, that's an issue we have to look at, but we have to also look at other options going forward. Because if, if, if this one fails, then we want better service. Tell me what the better service is going to be if it goes another plan. What parametric, metrics am I going to see better? Tell the town, the residents, what's going to be better if we do a municipal-based system? Personnel's been mentioned. Personnel, that's good, I understand that part, that's huge. Better for our fire department employees, better for, you know, parametric, paramedic, I'm hearing that. Besides that, what else is there?
And is some of it an evolution too? There are some things that would change right away, and some of it is more about like trying to set us on a, on a trajectory where we would have more cross-training. I mean, some of it at the beginning would be just Rockland would be performing.
Yeah, but I'm just, I'm just.
Like, yeah, explain the difference between our current service and what it would look like.
In terms of the layman can understand, please.
I think most fundamentally, the, the design of the system that we currently have is one that is split between, the resources are split between doing inter-facility transfers and responding to 911 calls.
No transfers.
And so what we're talking about is a system that is just focused on 911 calls.
Hundred percent dedicated to 911 calls, correct? Okay, good, that's, that's great. What else like that?
I'd say full integration with the fire service.
What has been the experience of the fires, I told you that, integration of fire services is huge. I'm a total advocate of that. What about, can you talk to a little bit about response times experience from Rockland's perspective maybe? Yeah, I mean, we, we talked a lot about this contract, this response times being inadequate. Do we have information on what response times of municipality-type systems are?
I think, I guess, it sounds like where we're going is talking about what the advantages of a fire-based EMS delivery service is.
Yes, sir.
Is that the term? Is that what you would consider Rockland to be also?
Yeah, yeah, it's fire-based EMS.
That's interesting, okay.
I didn't know that either.
So I'd put Chief Wysock on the spot to answer.
Thanks.
I've had some experience, that's how I started off my career. It's, to me, it's just a, the, the service delivery is better, the, the level of training and the commitment of the personnel is higher than what I'm seeing in a private service.
The fire department already gets there first a lot of the time, right?
Yes.
Is that true? Am I saying something that's true or not true? That the fire department often arrives at the scene before the ambulance?
I think that's too based on the fact that, you know, they're based in Rockport, you know, so.
Sure.
So if, if you have people in-house in Camden and there's a call in Camden, then, then, yeah, they're going, if they go, they're going to get there first. But that's, I mean, that, the, the basis of a fire-based EMS system is, is just that, you know, like Mark said, you have cross-trained people, you have, you have consistently monitored people, you have a hierarchy, it's a paramilitary organization, so it, it works well that way, it's worked well that way in Rockland since they started doing EMS, I think in the 60s. And that's what you see successful fire-based EMS systems come out of the municipalities.
Do they, do they have any metrics on response times from fire-based?
Sure, I mean, and, and again, it's.
Roughly, not specifically.
Yeah, no, it's, it's locations, obviously. I mean, you know, if, if your fire station is centered out of town, it's going to take you longer to get to. In the city of Rockland, where, where about four and a half minutes within the city of, from, from the time we're notified to the time we're there.
That's your average?
Four and a half minutes. And again, depending on the call, like, like Taylor said, if it's a, if it's an Alpha or Bravo call, or if it's an Alpha call, you're going normal flow of traffic, you know, because it's not a life-threatening injury or illness. But the Delta, Charlie, Echo calls, but, I mean, I, I think somebody alluded to, it's, it's, the level of service can be quantified, only in the fact of, of how you operate. So, you know, and I'll speak for Rockland because that's, that's what I know. And that's, that's kind of what I've based my thoughts, if, if this, you know, if this moves forward, that, that what happens in Rockland is going to happen in Camden and Rockport, it'll happen in Lincolnville and Hope if they're interested. But it involves fire departments, fire personnel helping, you know, again, the cross-trained piece is, is huge. But, you know, if you get, if you, right now, if you have a, a car accident in Rockland, you get an ambulance, you get a fire truck, you get two ambulances if you need them. And that happens in Camden and Rockport, but the, to me, it's, it's more hands make better work, and, and we.
Have you had, much, much of your experience been in the, extremely important topic of fire staff? You've got individuals who, have they actually moved into the EMT training process to bring their individual skills up as part of this model?
I, I think overall, if, if somebody's interested in, in a career, that they know that's where they need to be.
So you've, you've developed a career path for the fire department?
Exactly, yeah. Yeah, and I think, I mean, I, I've said this to every person who would ever listen, I think Rockport is, is one of the last fire departments in the state of Maine that operates with almost all volunteer and is consistently out the door with, with people ready to go. Everybody else is, I say, floundering at this point. I mean, we're, we're having a hard time, just like everybody else, finding volunteers, finding people that are, that are willing to, you know, to do this on a volunteer side of things, and that's why you have to pay people to be in your stations and to staff your trucks and to take the trainings. And, you know, our, the city of Rockland's fire budget is just over $2 million, and 88% of that is personnel cost, so.
What's career path have you found easier to staff ambulances with the paramedic level?
Hiring paramedics is, is, is a problem nationwide.
Right.
It's, it's finding, finding that quality level is, is a problem, but I think, I think it's obtainable, especially with a, with a system that is new, it's, it's collaborative, you know, there's, there's pieces in there that I think would draw people from other departments back, back to the mid-coast.
In terms of getting, getting back to things that, like, the average resident can, can understand, I mean, it's well and good that firefighters have career paths, and we understand how that makes a difference in the long run, but what does it look like? I feel like a lot of the accidents that would happen around here, a lot of the reasons that somebody might need an ambulance or emergency services aren't necessarily just in somebody's house that's on an address that you can go to. There'd be things at the snowball, at the, one of the lakes, the mountains. What's the difference in, you know, what, what can we expect from Northeast at this point on how do we deal with, with those kinds of calls where somebody might be seriously injured on the side of a mountain and not just need to be brought down, but need immediate medical attention?
Stabilized.
What, it seems like the fire department oftentimes is involved in anything on the lake or the mountain. Where, what's Northeast's role in that now, and what maybe?
Their, their role is essentially patient care, and anything else basically falls to the firefighters.
I think the latest contract, they took out the, the mountain part of response. They only responds to the trailhead, they don't go up on the mountain.
And I guess the difference would be, and correct me all if I'm wrong, so when the fire service as it is now, when they go, like, the individual that was up on Mount Batty that Northeast couldn't find, when they went up there, they could get him out, but they couldn't perform any care on that patient. Whereas if we had this combined, this fire-based EMS, you know, system, whoever went up would be able to treat them as well, because it would be somebody with the ability to perform patient care that would be going up.
I feel like a lot of people think, or at least I did, before I started talking to more firefighters, they assume that the average firefighter in, in Camden or Rockport has a higher, much higher level of medical training than they actually do.
That's often a public assumption.
Yeah, yeah.
You just see the uniform and everything, and you just, it's.
It makes a difference, yeah, I think it does.
But, I mean, that seems to me, that's a really huge.
Right.
Part of it, because that's where we're, a lot of the time, going to need.
Right. And to the question of, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, just based off that, that call he's talking about, because I was working that day, and I heard it on the radio, and they weren't, I called Knox to see if they knew what the, the person was, because I knew we were going to get called eventually. And at that time, they, Northeast had to call us before we would get dispatched. So I called, and I said, where are they? They said, oh, well, you're not called yet. And I said, no, I know, but I feel like we're going to be. And they were like, well, it's not, you're not on our list yet to call, so.
Right.
We were just, there was a couple of us who were listening to their pagers, and they just heard it. And they were just sitting there, and they're like, should we go? And we're like, well, we haven't been called yet. And then I think the chief said that after that, he changed it with dispatch so that if there's anything on the mountain, we're automatically called at the same time.
Like, somebody says, I'm on the Jack Williams Trail, and nobody knows, I mean, so having people that are in, like, part of the community.
Pretty confident that nobody in Northeast knows where the Jack Williams Trail is.
Right, I mean, that's.
Pretty sure we could lead you there pretty quickly.
Right.
The question of, just again, reinforcing and reinforcement of this, other options, other towns in Maine in particular have gone to fire-based type of service, I think Was Cassett's one that recently went all. Have, have we had any discussions with them about what their experience has been with that?
I haven't. I'm, I'm here, I'm here because, because we do it.
Well, I was going to say, just, if we don't, we should have that collective knowledge, it helps to identify what, it's very difficult, I agree, to measure qualitative changes, that's very difficult to measure. Quantitative is too simple, it's for us who have technical backgrounds that like quantity stuff, doesn't always work. But qualitative, you, you get that from talking to other entities in the state who have made the transition.
We're kind of fortunate, we're sitting at the table with somebody who was in the process of making a change from the same private sector provider to a municipal service, so.
Oh, Boden?
We just started the discussions about that.
Yeah, so I think Bill's got some good perspective.
I also, as manager in Waldeboro previously, we didn't have a fire-based EMS service, we had two separate services, but we had 24-hour.
Right.
Paramedic service, it was municipal.
It's municipal, because it says on the sign, it's EMS and fire department in Waldeboro.
Yeah, so I have that experience as well, so.
I, just to answer your, I did look, because I agree with you, that is an obvious helpful point. I, so the town of Woolwich, this had been previously using Northeast ambulance service, and they just, this year voted to, to take delivery themselves and run a municipal service. So I reached out to Brian Carlton, who is the EMS director down there, just because I was, exactly what you asked, I'm curious what their experience had been. And so his, he, just, so first of all, he had, was very open and offered to come up and sit down with us and, and come to a meeting and speak to us if we want to ask him to do that. But his, to summarize, you know, he, their difficulties with their provider, who also happens to be Northeast, were pretty much identical to what was just laid out here. And that they had been having response time and availability issues. And they said they sat down with Northeast in last, last September to discuss that. Ultimately, they came to an M-PASS, and the, they couldn't move forward, the town voted to run their, you know, to beef up their volunteer service to create a, a full-time municipal service. And he indicated to me, and Bill may be able to speak to this coming from that area, but that there were, there's a handful of other, you know, smaller municipalities in that area, Dresden, Boden, that had previously had a private service with Northeast and had then either moved to partner with their nearest larger municipality or start their own service. But it was.
Didn't Was Cassett do the same thing?
Was Cassett's always had.
Something.
For a while.
Something.
They've always had EMS personnel.
Yeah.
But didn't they recently switch 100% over, or maybe it was Woolwich?
I think you're thinking Woolwich.
Yeah.
Woolwich.
And I did, you know, I, I took notes that I can share with everybody, but Brian did offer to come up and talk to us.
But something that might be good, just to have, you know, additional reinforcement. Because remember, you know, to me, the, the average person that's out there thinks when they call the ambulance, they're going to get a service and quickly, right? That's, that's all they care about. They probably not expert on who is what on the truck, and they probably never will be.
Shouldn't have to be.
Shouldn't have to be.
Help is on the way, you're going to get the help.
And they're, probably the expectation is probably that it's coming out of the fire department as well.
No doubt, no doubt.
It's not an abnormality that the ambulance is based out of the fire department.
No doubt, no doubt. It's just.
It's, well, when it transitioned from the funeral home, it went to the Camden Fire Department. Chief Allen Payson built the first ambulance.
Right.
And whatever happened to morph into Camden First Aid?
Right, right.
So it, it was in the fire department here in Camden historically.
I get that. That's why, I think this list of some qualitative and quantitative reasons why you would go with a fire base is really important to have this discussion in the open here, so that the residents of Camden understand the elements that we're trying to deal with.
Can I give one more broad example? So, you know, recently, there was a fire in Hope, and, you know, when there's a fire, you should always have an ambulance present, because, you know, firefighters are at risk just inherently from the job that they're doing. And that fire, which was this summer, not only did an ambulance not show up, but they never told anyone they weren't planning to show up. And so that's, I think that's pretty fundamental, like, that's incomprehensible in Rockland. Am I?
Oh, yeah, I mean, even yesterday, we transported a firefighter from a, a car accident that got overheated and.
Oh, really?
And I mean, that's, 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 for us, that's a no-brainer. If there's, if there's something going on, there's people.
It happens a lot.
So, yeah, with a fire-based EMS system, when there's a fire, there's always going to be an ambulance, at, at least one ambulance at that fire.
And it's actually a little bit more alarming, though, the example Audra just said, because twice, they told the RCC that they would be en route shortly. And it was 27 minutes until they said, we can't take that call. This was at 2:00 in the morning.
Wow.
This was at 2:00 in the morning.
It's important, is there anything else?
Not 27 minutes till they got there, 27 minutes before they said, we're actually not coming.
Sorry, we're not coming.
You need to call mutual aid.
Oh.
Then call union.
After twice assuring.
Dispatch twice, before they get an ambulance on the road, correct.
Is there anything else in the fire, I love that term, fire-based service that you can think of that's qualitative, quantitative?
The, the big thing you got to take is to the point of, the fire service is getting difficult to get volunteers. Structure fires in the middle of the day or at night, we're, we're limited on our staffing. So, right now, if we have a structure fire, if they show up, they stand there waiting for someone that may need medical attention, where if we were to go with the municipality-based, those two EMS personnel that attend the fire theoretically can put air packs on and go and help fight that fire. So each department is gaining two extra firefighters. That's a huge advantage, especially at 2:00 in the morning, you're guaranteed two people on that first truck are ready to go right into that fire versus waiting for volunteers to come in.
So to the public's view again, if you were going with a fire-based system here, like Rockland's or Woolwich, would the general concept be to have these, you know, ambulances stationed in Rockport and in Camden? Is that the kind of distribution of model we're talking about?
Yeah, the idea of being one in-house here in Camden, staffed with two people 24/7, and the other in West Rockport.
So that, that in and of itself, obviously, requires less travel time than we have to deal with with calling any services not, because right now, Northeast has one in Rockport, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just trying, this is basic stuff you take for granted, you know, and knowledge, and the average person in the street doesn't get.
Yeah, do you guys mind just kind of like expanding on that a little bit more, like, I know you've talked about what that, what operationally a certain partnership with Rockland would look like, but just for the layperson, from the phone call that's made to 911, what's that going to look like? I know you talked about paramedic supervision, like, what, yeah, from the phone call for 911, what would that system look like in terms of response time and operations, so we can compare it to what we have now?
Yeah, I mean, and again, I go back to, it's, it's going to operate or will operate how it is in Rockland, you know, the phone call comes in, the dispatch level gets, gets, gets pulled, and, and the card gets pulled, and then depending on, you know, Camden and Rockport, in Rockland, wherever the call is, you know, you have, like, like the chief said, you have two people out the door in a fully-staffed ambulance ready to go. And, and the other kind of bigger picture of this as well is, is again, that, that you're going to get trained people who are your people, who are ready to go, and, and who work well with everybody else involved. And I think this, this whole thing can't work unless, you know, the fire chiefs are on board.
Oh, sure.
You know, obviously, the, the staffing is, is a big piece of this, if this goes into effect, you know, we have 11 people that, that we need to hire, and, and that's huge, but it's also exciting. You know, most of those positions, you know, can, we could fill tomorrow with, with the people that we have that are ready to look for a career, yeah.
Fire staff, right. Now, if, if, just going a little further, right now, we currently have four towns involved in our contract with Northeast, including Hope and Lincolnville. Would the model change, would, if Hope and Lincolnville were on board with this idea?
No, I, and that was something that Audra asked a while ago, you know, if, if Camden was interested in doing it on their own, by themselves, and, and I feel like just, just the call volume in Camden is enough that, that one ambulance staffed really is, isn't going to do it. I, I really think that in, in order for this to work and be successful, like, the numbers, you know, for staffing that I've come up with really are, you know, the minimum that we need to shoot for, so.
So it would be both stations, Rockport and Camden both?
Correct.
But that would, would that logically change if Hope and Lincolnville were part of the equation or not?
No, it just, and really what it does, it gives, it gives them both a, a shorter response time as well, because, you know, obviously, out on Route 90, you can pretty much get anywhere, and then down here, getting to Lincolnville will be pretty quick.
And also would bring the cost down for Rockport and Camden, with, somewhat, because Hope and Lincolnville wouldn't contribute that.
Yeah, that's what I, yeah, trying to stay off the financial thing at the moment, because I'm trying to deal with qualitative benefits of the two different ones, because there is, obviously, to that point, there is, and, and again, this is important, because at some point, if we're going to face the residents of Camden, Rockport, whoever, this is going to be a financial issue, we have to deal with it. Not that we can't, but I just, you know, I want to start with the qualitative, as I call them, benefits, which are, I've got a list of eight already on my little spreadsheet here, to talk about as we get to the next step, which would be discussing what the, here, to talk about, as we get to the next step, which would be discussing what, what the financial elements might, might entail.
I think one of, one of the other things that'd be good to consider, you know, as committees and all move forward, is the changing demographic of the area. You know, as we look at an aging population, as we look at a number of assisted living facilities, the need for paramedic-level care is actually going to be increasing. I think that's a, that's an important consideration in all of this.
I agree, but you're looking at me because I have gray hair.
People that can be at Bella Point.
Gray hair. No, I totally agree with that comment.
Number of people at Bella Point.
What's the average age in Camden now?
Fifty-five point four.
That's what, fifty-nine point four. It's not low.
Just a, kind of a thought on, on Bob, what you were trying to get at earlier, looking at, you know, our contract, and for the next, you know, we can, we can certainly try to make improvements moving, looking forward, but in the short term, eleven months, or whatever that might be, certainly we have a responsibility to make sure that the best foot's being put forward for EMS. I think part of what makes that difficult ties into this bigger conversation, is that we in the mid-coast geographically for emergency services are at a disadvantage. This is a really tough task, no matter how you place it, because we don't have a large municipality close by to be able to rely on. We're not close to Augusta, we're not close to Bangor. Southern Maine is a very different system, because there's so many large municipalities down there, they have the resources available. We're kind of, and I think Chief Whitlock has talked about this in the past, we're kind of on our own, in a sense, in the mid-coast area. So if, you know, we did feel like our current partner is not meeting contractual obligations, and we terminated without cause, well, that might be our reaction. The reality is, and that might be a justified action, the reality is, if we do that, we're, we've not put ourselves in any better position, because we don't have...
Not ready.
A great partner to call up and say, you know, "We're ready to go right now." We just...
Correct.
Which is, I think, what makes this such, A, an important conversation, but a difficult one, because, you know, we, you know, if we want this to work in a different way, more fluently, we have to bootstrap it, and, you know, we're kind of relying on ourselves to do it, because we don't, you know, we're just, geographically, we're in a position where we don't have a lot of backup plans available to us.
Well, I think there, it seems to me there are two paths forward, or parallel paths forward. One is, I, I think, because Camden is a signatory to a contract, and realizing, Mark, I agree that there are other towns involved, I think the town of Camden needs to ASAP get a, a real concise, you know, message to Northeast that we need to talk about A, B, C, D, and E, whatever they are. And, 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 I mean, because you're, you're dealing with contractual responsibility here. If then it's not there, I, I think it should be defined well with Northeast, that they are in contractual, you know, and not within the contract limits. And that's, that's, that's responsibility as a, as a town. In parallel with that, though, I think in terms of looking at other options coming forward, in this list of great stuff that you've all brought, I think it would be wise for us to have a, a meeting with probably the Rockport gang ASAP to talk about this a little bit more, flesh on the bone of what other options are available, in case we decide to go that route. But that would include the discussion on the qualitative basis, which is quite clear, but also the quantitative basis.
Just to clarify that, in the, in this most recent one-year extension that we signed, us and Rockport assigned a one-year extension.
All four towns, all four towns.
Well, I think...
No, I think they did two years.
Hope and Lincolnville decided to sign two-year extensions.
But the second year is contingent, potentially, on the other towns signing up or not? Lincolnville's contract, I believe, what it says is, "It's a two-year contract, but we reserve the right, Northeast, to withdraw if the other towns don't participate."
Oh, really? Okay.
That's my knowledge.
I believe that's true.
I believe that's true. Well, they can't, I mean, if, if, I mean, fairness to Northeast, if three, two of the larger towns were to pull, I don't see how the model's gonna work with, with the dollars they have in that contract for two years.
We should check that, because I actually think it's the opposite.
Really?
Yeah. Because I was, I remember being surprised, but I think that, I think that Northeast was willing to do a two-year addendum for those towns, but not more at this point, and we should just, we should nail it down.
Absolutely, I agree.
I mean, one, the other thing that I think we need to emphasize that, and Audrey, you can stop me if it's, you don't think this is a good part of this conversation, but we have a letter from Bill Kelly, you know, our attorney, that I think lays out, and he was really concerned about some of the signs. We talk about how we don't have a lot of other options besides Northeast. And then we also see many, many warning signs that it almost seems like could be coming from a company that is not financially stable. We don't have any, because they're not, you know, they're a private company, so they don't have to let us see all the internal workings of their books, they don't have to prove that they're, you know, financially solvent. And so what does that, what does that mean? If Northeast were to fold, which, based on, based on, you know, reading Bill Kelly's letter, it seemed like he was telling us, "This is an actual concern, he, there are very odd things in this contract negotiation." And so, I mean, that's one more reason to, it's almost like we have to do something different, because how, it, it seems very irresponsible for us to be one hundred percent dependent on basically a monopoly for ambulance service that may not be stable. And is there any way to, what does it say, if Northeast were to go bankrupt?
That's it.
Well, you can what-if, you can what-if, remember...
Yeah, you can what-if, but I mean, we just...
Well, there was, that letter was a supposition, that it was, it was a caution that there could be a, a financial issue going on, but in the meantime, we've, we've still got a contract with them.
But does it, I'm just curious, does it say anything about that? Does our contract say?
No contract does.
Or what would we do? Do we have an emergence, like, a true emergency plan where we would say, even, okay, fine, it's gonna cost a million dollars, but we still wanna rescue people in Camden? Rockland, can you do it right now? Because Northeast just... We've had in the town other contractors that have gone bankrupt. It's not a, it's, it seems like I'm saying a crazy what-if scenario, but when you con, you know, things are subcontracted out, it happens all the time where the company can't...
I think it's perfectly reasonable for you to be bringing this up, because of all the things that we do, public safety is one of the most important things we do. So I think that...
Yeah, it is.
Having this cumulative sort of number of concerns, we've gotta be...
Yep.
What if all of a sudden they couldn't pay people? They would have, they would have, you know, ambulance drivers walking out, or, and they don't have to provide any assurance to us that this is gonna happen? Yeah, we'd end up in the bankruptcy court, but...
Well, yeah, I understand the west coast, I know for a fact, two, three towns and cities went bankrupt and had the same issue, had to go through bankruptcy court to, so, you know, that's a path, it's certainly an element, I think we're certainly gonna discuss it in, in conversations with the, with our supplier, Northeast, right now. But, and I also believe that the conversation with Northeast should be between the town of Camden and Northeast, because if we...
Could Rockland show up tomorrow if we had, if there was some kind of emergency situation?
Rockland would be there.
They would be there.
It would just cost us a lot.
Northeast currently uses Rockland as a crutch.
Right.
If they're not able to handle a call, they know that the city is gonna be there to answer the call.
Yeah, we see, we see Rockland trucks here all the time.
But I guess that's another point we didn't bring up during the contractual discussion, is that we've, we've inadvertently designed an agreement where Northeast really has, as long as Rockland is there responding to calls, they could theoretically not ever respond to any EMS calls.
Mm-hmm.
So I think that, just from a regional perspective, and the way that you deal with and treat your neighbors, that's not, you don't wanna ever put another municipality in that sort of position, where they're your default provider.
Audrey, what do you, what do you recommend we do with regard to the current contract? What procedure should we take? Should, I recommend in Camden only?
I guess the problem is, the agreement isn't laid out so we can unilaterally take action.
Okay.
It's laid out so that the four, the four towns collectively need to take some sort of...
Is termination with cause, four towns?
Yes.
Uh, is it a, is it a wait-and-vote system?
It is an unofficial committee.
Mm-mm.
It's, it's like mid-coast solid waste without any governance rules.
Right.
Whoa. No, hold on, but in order for us to take action, like, to issue a notice of violation, or whatever the equivalent is...
I mean, we can certainly...
We can certainly...
Be done through the four towns, or Camden individually can do it, or Camden and Rockport individually can do it.
I don't think it's...
For like assessing penalties, and that, that sort of side of things that needs to happen through the, the committee.
Through the committee?
Yeah.
Is there, okay, so it would be a vote of the committee members?
The town...
I think that...
The town may issue notices of contract violation, excess liquidated damage for failure, that's the town, it doesn't say the four towns. But what does it say for termination?
We've got a new, we've got a new addendum, so we have to do like a, give them a cure period.
Right. No, I understand, but where's the termination clause?
But seems like we might as well, so, it seems like Camden and Rockport have already gone through the exercise of looking to see if the data from Northeast matches the data from, from Knox. And, so you guys are aware that there might be, there are discrepancies. Hope and Lincolnville should, should at least be officially notified, okay, this is what we've, we have found, this, in our, you know, these discrepancies, you guys may wanna go through that same exercise of comparing data, just...
Yeah, that would be...
And maybe that will put them right on the same...
It, it does, the contract...
At least we tried.
The contract does say the town, which is the signatory, has the right to issue a notice of violation for termination with cause. The town, doesn't say the towns, so we do have a contractual right to terminate our portion of the contract, if we should go that way.
Is that a final?
That's what it says, well, it bounced off the bill, but that's what it says.
That's for termination, though, what about for assessing penalties?
That has to happen through the committee.
Right.
And it provides...
It's collective.
No detail on how the committee decides?
No, under local agreement, I think, sir.
No, that's correct, that's correct, isn't it?
There isn't?
No.
And I think this goes to, you know, not to continue to beat on failures in the past, but I think it was a short sighting to, to the way that committee was put together when the contract was first put, you know, signed, and it was just not an effective, not an effective way to provide oversight.
And I believe that the, the committee can vote to dismiss the complaints, if they feel it's not their, their fault.
Right, right.
Who votes? The two people from each town? Does it have to be unanimous, or is it majority, or...
There's no...
There's no...
Nothing.
Well, typically, you assume it'd be the majority.
Is it a majority of the people present at the meeting, or a majority of the towns?
Assuming, assuming there's a quorum, it would be the majority of the people present.
So many unanswered questions, Allison.
Yeah.
Rather than questions, but it was just the way it was poorly designed.
We need a specific action, we can talk for days.
The big thing to keep in mind is, this has been going on for, what, five and a half years now?
Yeah, it's not...
I know Chris and I, at the beginning, raised our hand, saying no. It went through anyways, and each year, it's progressively gotten worse, worse, and worse. The communication has gone from almost little to absolutely none. They cannot staff ambulances up here on a regular basis. That is the biggest concern people should be looking at.
Of course.
They are bringing ambulances up from Brunswick on a regular basis to help fill the void. They're relying on Rockland weekly, because they're out on transfers, so they're pulling Chief Whitlock and his crew away from Rockland. It, it's, that's what we have to really look at, is that things have progressively gotten to the point where it's a concern.
What we can do is, Mark, go ahead.
I was, I was gonna say, based on the contract negotiations, and the way they dealt with that...
It was not good.
We can go, we can go to them and say, "We're unhappy about this," and they're basically gonna say they don't care.
Nothing's going to change. I understand that you wanna go to them...
Well, I have to.
And I absolutely agree, but we have proven it is not going to change for the better in any way, shape, or form.
I'm not...
I was gonna say, in our...
I'm not predicting the future, I'm good at just trying to define it.
And every EMS committee meeting we've had...
I, I get it.
Where Butch and Joe are there, Joe has said, "Absolutely, I'll be meeting, we're gonna fix this, we're gonna get it done," and it has not happened.
Understood. Audrey, I think the most logical approach is twofold still. One, talk to Bill Kelly and find out, now, because I believe, I think I know what the answer is, but let him confirm about where, and we've got to proceed to talking, attempting to, whatever you wanna call it, with Northeast, to say, "This is the concerns, and what can we do?" In parallel, we, I think we need to open up a quick dialogue with other towns, starting with Rockport, because they're, you know, they're our, our big brother. And, and I think that this model seems to me to make sense if there's more than one town that may think about this as being an option, to be candid. And I haven't spoken, and then, after that, we need to bring in the other towns to, to talk about the reasons and where we're forced to listen to their concern, because I, I do, do care about the, you know, the dog wagging the tail, and Lincolnville and Hope are smaller towns, they have financial restrictions, we all do, so we need to listen to those too. But I think that, that would be the procedure, I would say. But there are two parallel tracks. One is, we've got an eleven-months contract remaining with Northeast Ambulance Service, and we've identified problems, and we, we have a responsibility to do everything we can to try to make that better. If, and if it doesn't, okay, you know, you're all predicting it won't, I'm not putting any money on the table, neither are you. Coffees, maybe, but that's, that's one track. The other track would be to immediately set up, because it's urgent, a meeting with at least Rockport to start, to see what their thinking is on their select board and, ASAP. Then followed immediately by discussions with the other two towns.
I agree.
All right, so I've got one question for the four of you. You know, the purpose of this meeting was to kinda talk about the issues and why we're even pursuing this in the first place. Does everybody feel really clear that those were articulated, or is there anything that everybody's still a little bit uncertain about?
Well, from my perspective, I think it's very well articulated, it's, I mean, I'd like to have started with that, rather than ended with that, because I think it's the most important element, in terms of service to the community, what it is, what we want for the community, and that's the primary concern. Started off with a contract discussion, that's nice, but that's a, that's a given town situation that we have to deal with. But as it ended, yeah, I, I'd love to discuss, personally, love the discussion about the benefits of fire-based services.
I mean, is there anything that hasn't been said? It seems like sometimes it's, the conversation revolves around what questions we can think of to ask, and so I might not know to ask all the right questions.
I don't think we want, Audrey wants us to get into it today, but we actually have compiled a list over the last six months that we don't wanna go over today, but there's a large laundry list of serious incidences that have happened, or not happened, with Northeast, where they have not shown up for calls.
They've got it.
We, we have it, but we didn't bring it...
No, but can you get it to her?
Sent a copy to her.
We went over it this morning, yeah.
Yeah.
So, there's a lot bigger concerns, but we didn't wanna turn that into...
No.
See, that's what I said.
I mean, I kinda feel like we need to hear a little bit about that.
And now, why, I, I have heard for so long about this, like, these rumblings, and then very frequently have been told, "Oh, but careful, it's not quite the right time, Allison, don't ask those questions, or don't ask." And I, it's always confused me, like, "Oh, we don't wanna turn this into a Northeast bashing session." Okay, we're not bashing Northeast, we're just being, everything we do in government is supposed to be transparent. All of my emails, you know, if I wrote a stern, you know, all of that is just, that's the way we do things. It just all gets aired out, even if it sounds really bad, and then sometimes clarif, there's clarification, and we don't like, I don't know why, what do you see as the reason to not talk about those things today?
That's what I was advised.
We, we have...
Politically correct, right?
Six years of experience with, with our current provider, Allison, we, we could give you experience after experience.
And I hear those...
And I'll put some of those lists together. But, I mean, it doesn't, rehashing them to me doesn't do any, any good.
Not rehashing though for the general public.
I think the question you haven't asked is, Chief Whitlock is sitting here and Chief Peaslee and I are sitting here and you haven't asked, is this something we think is a good idea is to collaborate with the city of Rockland?
Oh, I guess I thought maybe that was like a given, but probably not for this.
I think it's a given that people understand that Northeast isn't providing a good service.
Exactly, and I, so I've now, because that's what happens. I've now had conversations and gotten a little bit of extra knowledge and then lost perspective of what the general public knows or doesn't know. And the same thing happens with you guys in terms of like, so what, I mean, let's just be clear. What do you, what do the two of you think about this? Is this, we need to do something?
As a taxpayer in Lincolnville or as a fire chief, there's absolutely no reason we shouldn't be doing this as soon as we can. I feel that we are being put in a dangerous situation on a daily basis around here. I will give you one example. Within the last three weeks, this community, four-town community have been left without an ambulance for over four hours. One was in Boston, one was in Portland. No communication was provided to Rockland Fire and EMS to say, just so you know, we are going to be gone. We had no ambulances anywhere around here for over four hours. I think it was four and a half hours to be exact. They were all gone on transfers, nobody was communicated, nobody was informed that there would be not a single Northeast ambulance anywhere near here. That's just one example within the last three weeks. And we could go on and on. It's back to this point.
Would you, I mean, do you feel the same way? Is it safe to assume?
If I had been asked in 2012 or 2013 what we should be doing, this would have been my suggestion, is that we do something collaborative with our neighbors.
Absolutely.
I think Chief Whitlock has coined it as we're creating our own mutual aid by doing this. Kind of what Taylor alluded to, we're kind of isolated. We are creating our own backup system by doing this. To me, much the same that Camden and Rockport are doing with their police chief, we should be doing more and sharing our fire services together and doing it more collaboratively. And I think we are heading further and further towards that direction. I think this, this just takes it that much further down that road. To me, it gives us the opportunity to take a look at our whole building, our whole apparatus replacement schedule and how can we make it more cost-effective based on the personnel that we currently have.
Because I've always heard, oh, no, you can't even talk about any kind of collaborating that would involve the fire department because that's something that can't be talked about.
Consolidating and working together are two different things.
Very different. That's a generations-old conversation, Allison, and the way I put it is this way. My father went to Rockport High School, my mother went to Camden High School. That is pretty darn important to them. Their identity still is, I'm a graduate of Rockport High School, I'm a graduate of Camden High School. This young man's generation right here went to Camden Hills Regional High School with people from five towns. It's not as a big of a deal to them. They're from the mid-coast, they're not from Camden or Rockport.
In just the last three or four years, things have significantly changed with all the fire departments. We, thanks to Chris, we are in Rockland a significant amount. Anytime anything major comes, we're there, vice versa, we're in Camden nonstop or they're in Rockport. We've been fortunate lately, but we all work together seamlessly. We train together now, we're all training together, which never happened four years ago. Did we ever train together? I mean, did you train with Rockport at any given time in the past?
Sporadic at best, so.
So things are changing. I mean, people keep saying consolid, we're not talking consolidation of fire, we're starting to do things together.
I think one of the other situations, when you were on the Budget Committee, last year on the Budget Committee, you as a champion of the Budget Committee, myself and the Select Board brought in our fourth full-time person for fire department because we recognized that we didn't have enough people to provide proper fire service. By bringing in additional people this way, additional employees, we will improve the fire service as well as EMS. It's a dual situation, we'll improve both sides. I mean, we're situated, how many towns, if you have a call for a structural fire, how many towns get called right now? We have four towns, Camden, Rockport, Lincolnville and Hope. Which is, which is amazing that they have to call that many people out to get enough people to safely.
That depends when it is. The fire we just had on 4th of July weekend, how many towns showed up for that one? We had union coming, or Chief Farley had union coming. Lincolnville, Sears-Mont-Northport went to Lincolnville to stand by, there was no staffing.
As Audrey said, the most important thing we provide for the public is public safety.
Yeah, sure.
And this is moving forward in a way that can, you know, as they said, will combine forces in a long way in keeping safety much better for a long period of time.
That whole list thing, I don't understand why if, there's no other area of like government where we would keep lists like that from being aired on a regular basis. Every time somebody's upset about a sidewalk or it all gets aired and talked about and somebody comes in and, so we should definitely be doing that with.
The way to compensate, Allison.
Mass issues too, with ambulance issues.
That information needs to be gotten to Audrey, which does make it part of the public record, by the way. Because as we're talking about dealing with Northeast here.
But you are asking the question now and they do have the information.
Oh, sorry, you know, I wasn't blaming, I wasn't blaming them. I was just saying, you know, that would be something like, you know, report to the town manager every week or however you do it, like, things like that I would see even should end up in a town manager's report. Just so everybody knows, this happened. We know it's a concern to some people and this is how we're going to, you know, working to make it better with Northeast. It seems like, you know.
So I guess part of your answer, Allison, is that, you know, sometimes it's difficult to change habits and we were told for years, don't talk about the issue.
I see.
Unless there's a reason not to talk about that, I'm not thinking of it. I mean, of course we want to protect privacy and I trust that everybody knows how to do that in, you know, a way that makes sense. We don't talk about, you know, details of the house that we're, you know, things like that. But it just seems only logical that.
That's what our superior bosses told us to do and not to do.
Logical to me too, Allison.
Just like, I don't want my, I don't want even the town manager necessarily advising safety on what to do and not to, I mean, in general, you know, some of it, but you kind of want your opinions to be the ones that rise to the top.
Is there, I guess to Allison's, which she's getting at, I think smartly, is there, while we're here sitting, sitting down, is there anything else in that list that, is there more of the same of what we talked about or is there any, is there anything else that we should, that should come up today or is it just consistent, repeated?
Data.
Patterns of behavior from what we just talked about?
It's consistent, it's.
Consistent.
It's, it's Northeast relying on Rockland because they're out on transfers versus 911 and having to pull Rockland. It's, that's an every week, every other week, you know.
What about people not having the skills that they need to do the job? What I've heard about is concern, people not being able to maybe make it up the mountain. I heard today for the first time that they're not even required to provide service on anything that's not a major road. How does that, how do we delineate between where they're supposed to go and where not? They never have to get in a boat, they never have to.
They.
What about Curtis Island or?
Let's just clarify that they do go into the state park. So they, they get out of the ambulance and they walk into, into the park and provide patient care.
Does the contract require that they do that?
I don't think it's.
I don't think it specifically says they need to.
Legally, if they're there, they have to provide patient care. Yeah.
Well, it's not, what the contract got rid of was they used to have a, correctly, if I'm wrong, a mountain rescue type team that was a technical rescue team, like high angle ropes, that sort of thing. I don't know that it ever really came to fruition in an effective way, but that piece was removed from the contract. So if someone, and this, you guys took a dozen carryouts on the mountain, through the park, a summer probably, right? Somebody rolls an ankle on top of the mountain.
Sure.
Northeast will go up to provide medical services, but the, two people aren't going to carry out someone with a broken ankle. So that's where you guys are at the moment are coming in to carry that person out while Northeast theoretically is providing medical services. The change, if we were to consolidate EMS and fire under one roof partnering with Rockwood would be, when you guys go up there, it's one unit operating under the same policies, the same SOPs there.
One person in charge.
What if somebody's.
Much like Rockland Fire.
Drowning in the middle of McGonagall Lake or on Crane Island and has a heart attack, what happens?
We get called to assist. Much the same earlier this month, we, there was somebody on a boat in the harbor having a cardiac issue. The fire department got called to bring the patient in from the boat to the ambulance.
At the moment, does that require Northeast to say, hey, call Camden Fire to come help us with this call?
I think the way that transpired, that, that was midnight or one o'clock in the morning call. And I think actually Sergeant Weaver suggested that they call the fire department.
I don't think anything requires them to call us at all, does it?
I don't think, no.
No, I mean, clearly because they were up on the mountain on July 3rd, walking around trying to find a patient, didn't think to call people that might actually know the mountain.
Who's, whose technical responsibility is it if somebody's on the mountain and they're in a place that's dangerous to get to? Or like they fall and they're partway down a cliff, does, is that the fire department that is trained?
Probably the fire department brings the folks with the skills to do that. Northeast does not provide that. They provide an ambulance and medically trained personnel.
The medical service.
They don't provide any type, anything beyond that.
Right, right, they're not rescue.
I'm just, that just got me thinking about who does do that.
So let's get that data, make sure, you don't have all the data, I assume. We should have if we're discussions with Northeast. You do, okay, cool. Are you clear on?
So what I'm going to do is I'm going to, everything we talked about pretty much, we're going to write up in like a memo format with examples and data. We're going to send it to Rockport because they're, you know, the first town we're going to try to set up a meeting with to try and talk to them.
Yes.
We'll also write something up to Northeast to deal with the here and now, which is the current contract year that we're in. Or even the past contract year and some accountability around that. And we'll send that off to, you know, build a review and then them so we can talk about it.
Yeah, and.
I think it's, we've got two parallel tracks going on.
We do.
One is the short term, one is the long term.
Correct, correct.
So for the long-term planning, I think, of course, we need to meet with Rockport.
Yes, ASAP, because I think it's important to make sure we're, this is not just Camden. And if we don't, you know, we could be on different pages, I'm not saying we are, but we just want to make sure we're not dictating. Camden is not dictating here.
Yep.
We'll do that. And then beyond that, I want people to understand also that we're going to bring in Hope and Lincolnville at some point. We have to, I want to hear their concerns because they have concerns, you know, and I understand that. Whether they're based on financial or physical, that's, we'll find out. But I think that's the two parallel tracks I see, yeah. And by the way, into the action with Northeast, given, you know, what I'm hearing and the severity of concern, that has to be a, I would tell Bill Kelly, this has to be a raise the red flag, not the orange flag. Because that makes a difference in how we approach it with Northeast. I'm exaggerating, I'm not suggesting we have to go with a nastiness of termination with cause because I'm not sure what we would do in that situation in the first place.
To try to make it constructive.
I totally agree. I totally give them a chance to tell us what they can do better or can't and what the, and what contractual changes could be made in that regard also.
Right, and I mean, I hear what the chiefs are saying, but I mean, this, this is our, you know, like we said to them when we were going to renew for one year.
Yep.
You have an opportunity to put your best foot forward for a year.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, it's not our job to project.
It's a good opportunity too.
It is, it is. So that will be the parallel tracks and unless we have anything else, then they'll adjourn the workshop, take us offline.
Yeah, I just kind of had a final thought. I agree 100% with the path forward, I think that you summarized it perfectly. I think the, just from my perspective, the, you know, the best case scenario, and we do this in a bunch of different municipal things, not just EMS, if we can collaborate with our four towns and make that work effectively for everybody, that's a great scenario. And that's worked well on numerous things. I think the reality is, and we've proved this in the past, and the reason we have the current contract that we do is because we couldn't come to an agreement between the four towns on what the minimum level of service should be for EMS. So I think keeping, I think from my perspective, I am not satisfied with the level of service that we have right now in EMS. And I think that that, I think we have an obligation to find a way to improve that. And talking with our partnering towns is incredibly important and if we can find a way for all four of us to work together, then that's perfect. I think the reality is if we go down the road and the conversation becomes about us having very different views on what the minimum level of service is in some of our partnering towns, we have to be willing to say, maybe this is not something that we partner us four towns on. You know, at the end of the day, our responsibility is to the taxpayers of Camden. And, you know, if we can regionalize in a way that's effective, then that is icing on the cake. But I don't want to be in a position again where we're, we can't come to terms with partners on what the minimum level of service is. I don't think that it's acceptable for us to.
Yeah, we're not, we're not at that point, we're not at that point right now, but I agree with you, I agree with you.
I do think the EMS committee should get together.
Yeah.
It's been quite some time, I believe is what you've said.
That wouldn't hurt.
Or have the four towns reorganize who's on those committees. I think that that could be done, but I think they need to meet, the town managers should require that that get back together sooner than later.
Yeah, I would agree, as long as it doesn't hold up the action plan for the town of Camden.
No, but they still should meet and discuss.
I totally agree.
That way the other towns can be involved and.
Well, that's, I mean, that's the best vehicle for all four coming together to discuss this.
I would doubt the other towns have done the research that you two have done.
I know they haven't.
So understanding what's going on is important.
I think you're going to be hard pressed, in my opinion, I don't know if Chief Farley will back me up to get Hope in Lincolnville to do this. This was not, that is a substantial amount of work and I do not see them doing it.
But we could bring it to the table for them, you know, and that's a good thing to do. I think we should convene that and try. I know they've had difficulty getting attendances on occasion at that meeting, but absolutely, I totally agree with you, Chief. Totally agree.
Why is it so much work to get this done? Isn't there some automated system that?
It's two different systems, two different types of data and you can't just.
Does the Knox County, I mean, we pay them all this money to dispatch, don't they record?
There are times, we have professional data sheets from each. However, you can't convert them to one, you can't mail them, put them all in. And trust me, we've had some people that are extremely technical that can recreate.
It wasn't hard to get the data from Knox.
Oh, we have all the data, it's just getting it.
It's just comparing.
Comparing, yes.
It's not like Knox.
It was hard to get the data from the RCC.
Right.
It took 11 months.
Yeah.
It did take 11 months.
That's a separate issue also.
Why don't they keep track of, how did, isn't it just a matter of a spreadsheet somewhere?
And I'm not saying this to be facetious whatsoever, we could probably have a whole separate workshop on that as well. Chris, Chris Whitlock knows a lot about it. Chris Farley and Whitlock.
And I think we will do that.
Are you on the board too?
Um, no.
No, I'm sorry. Chris Whitlock doesn't, Chris Farley.
He knows.
Let's, we probably, we likely will have future workshops on this, but thank all you fire staff. Your discussion about fire-based services was great, very productive meeting. We got some action going forward and then we got to move fast. With that, we'll convene.
Thank you for, this is really helpful to have both of, you know, all three towns here and.
Allison, could you pop us off the video?
It makes it seem weird when, nothing, just like. It normally just happens on.